I call this the September 21st, 2021 Lincoln County Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Brother Randy Nichols. Brother Randy, he's the minister at the Mary Natha Baptist Church. And our pledge allegiance tonight will be given by Claire Thorpe. She is in the 4th grade at Unity. She's a dancer at the Backstage Performing Arts, member of the Fayetteville First Baptist Church, enjoys shopping and eating around the Fayetteville Square, and playing on her phone. She also swims, and catch this, bosses her younger brothers. So, she's the daughter of Commissioner John and Dr. Andrea Thorpe. And there's a couple of proud grandparents in here, and a former Commissioner Bill and Kay Askin. So, y'all welcome, and if you would, please stand for our prayer and our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Well, God, again, it is that we stand before you with humble hearts, ask you, God, to forgive us of our shortcomings, our sins, and our misfortunes. God, cleanse our hearts now as we ask your guidance and your understanding, your counsel of wisdom for these men and women, Lord, to represent each and every body of our county, Lord, from all places. We pray, God, that you'd bless them in a mighty way tonight, that your wisdom would be with them, God, as they look to things that influence all of us together. And, God, we pray now for unity among the bodies all over our county, Lord, that we would stand together in your love and in your blood, and through that, God, we'd move forward into the next day, the next week, and the next group of commissioners. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Brother Randy, and thank you, Claire. At this time, we'll have roll call.
I have 21 commissioners present, three absent.
Twenty-one and three.
Eighteen, eighteen present, I'm sorry. Three absent.
Okay. Announcements. This is an update on our, where we've been looking for a storage for archives and our records. About two weeks ago, Randy DeLaup and Ricky Pierce and I went and looked at a property that belongs to Ricky White. It's the former White Motorsports Building, as you go up the hill towards Park City on the left, if you're going south. And we asked him to price it to us. It's 5,000 square feet in the heated and cooled area. There's additional 1,000 square feet on the back that's basically just storage. It is not weather tight. There's five acres there with that property. He has priced that to us for $395,000. This will come as an official piece of business for next month's Budget Committee, but between now and then, if anybody wants to look at it or get information, I'll be glad to supply that to you. At this time, I would ask for an approval of the minutes of the August Commission meeting. Mr. Bradford makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Walker seconds it. Any questions or comments on anything in last month's minutes? All in favor of approval, as they were printed, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. You should have received nine monthly committee meeting minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of those, please. Commissioner Hunter makes a motion. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. All in favor of the acknowledgement of receipt of those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item is, we have C task, our area representative Melissa Kelton with us tonight. She's going to bring us up to speed on our redistricting process.
Hi, everybody. I'm so glad to be here. Your committee did a great job. They got us all in line with each district. Each district had to be plus or minus 5%. You had, I think, six districts that were out of line, and by the time we were done, I think we touched each one and got them all in line. Where you are in the process is the committee is going to meet again and formally approve the plan, and then they will present this to the commission for approval. And then, once that is done, you'll have the resolution, and I'll come back and meet with Sheila Allen, and we'll do the voting precincts, and you'll be done. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Next item is review of our public records policy. Our county attorney, Ed Sims.
You should have received a copy of our public records policy with your package, or maybe it's on the email. We are supposed to review this every two years. The only comment that I've received so far is from the county mayor, and it's just a change of address of planning and zoning to 112 Main Avenue South, Room 107. Does anybody else have any comments on the public records policy? The mayor, I guess it's been reviewed.
Okay. Do we need a motion acknowledging that we have reviewed that?
I think that'd be in good order, Your Honor.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to that effect at this time. Mr. Bradford makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Haynes seconds it. All in favor of acknowledging that we did review the public records policy, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approve that acknowledgement. Our next item, consideration for approval to reelect Commissioner David Sanders and Commissioner John Thorpe to the Health Facilities Committee. Those two terms would expire October 2024. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion for approval. Do I have a, Commissioner Revis seconds. Any questions or comments on this? All in favor of approval of those two, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next two items, Ms. Nancy Harris, our Director of Planning and Zoning.
Before I get started, I want to introduce the newest employee for planning and zoning. Come on up. This is Mickey Capley. He's our residential, part-time residential inspector and code enforcement officer. He will be assisting Charles, and we're looking forward to a good working relationship with him. He's about ready to take his tests, so we're full steam ahead.
Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome. Earlier this evening, we held a public hearing for the first item, which is file number ZR 2021-2. It's an amendment for the zoning resolution, Article 3, Section 3.060, standards for telecommunication antennas and towers. During the public hearing, there were no comments, so we closed that down. You have in your packets my staff report of what this amendment is, and basically, in a nutshell, it is adding different types of public communication equipment to our current language, and also to do some housekeeping. The previous regulation stipulated that the permit was valid for 12 months. Further in, our zoning resolution and our building permits are 24, so we've made that amendment there. In addition, it requires the applicant to notify adjoining property owners within 200 feet, even including across any roadway, by certified mail, that the planning and zoning office prepares, and the applicant is responsible to mail that certified mail within 15 days prior to the meeting.
That it?
That's it.
What's the will of the commission as far as changing the standards of the telecommunications, antennas, and towers? Was it Commissioner Douglas made the motion? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Walker seconds. Any questions or comments on these changes? All in favor of the changes, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Ms. Nancy?
Next on the agenda is file number 2021-R6. This is a request to rezone from A1 to I1, property located at 3214 Huntsville Highway. You have in your packet my staff report, and the only thing that we're doing tonight is calling for a public hearing to be held, let's see, it'll be October 19th at 5:30 here, I guess here, or at the courthouse, I'm not sure. Oh, no, no, this one's here, right? Because of the ads.
Yep. What's the will of the commission on call for public hearing on this property? Commissioner Holland makes a motion for call. Commissioner Jean seconds. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is our Main Street Report, and the chairman of the board, Jason Nix, is with us tonight. Jason, appreciate you being here and look forward to your report.
Thank y'all for having me again. We met again at the board meeting we meet every month. We met here last night. But I'll run down just quickly. We've ended our First Friday events in September. I think overall, we've had, I guess it was April through September this year, really good year. First Friday event went off really good. Had one little hiccup in the middle with the unexpected rainstorm one day, but even that event, even though it got kind of canceled, uncanceled, it still went off pretty good as well. Overall, very successful, a lot of vendors, including most months having waiting lists for vendors. I just thought it was a, it was a really good event for this year. Slawberger Festival was happened in, it was moved from April to August. It happened. Very rainy day, very rainy day. But honestly, after the rain broke at about 1 o'clock, we were able to get all of our contests in, and most of our events that were planned for the day, we got those in. And it turned out to be a really pretty day, full on the floor, local band here played, had a pretty good crowd for that, actually, and enjoyed that on the gazebo. So, if you missed it, don't worry, it's coming back, April. It's reset for back for April in 2022. I don't know the exact date yet, but that's coming. Other things upcoming, we have Spirits for the Spirits. It's a more of a, it's a Halloween-themed walking tour of the Fayetteville downtown with the merchants opening their doors to entertain us as well. Tickets are on sale for that now. Just look for the web, look at our website, and you can purchase those tickets there. I think it's a total of 60 is the tickets that are being sold for that. It's October the 21st from 5 to 10. Other events, obviously, the Host of Christmas Past is right around the corner in November. That is actually chaired mostly by the Chamber of Commerce, but we do back them up on this event, and we've got, obviously, another big event there planned as well. We have the whole, we held the lighting of the trees ceremony the Friday night before that kind of kicks off the event, and a few other things will be worked in that event. I think last time I was here, I talked about our director position's still not filled. It's still not filled. We are on the look for that, hoping to get some applicants in over the next few months and in the year with the director position filled is the goal. So, any questions or comments? I'll be happy to entertain anything.
Any questions for Jason? Jason, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next item, committee, Budget Committee Report, Commissioner Ogilvy.
Budget Committee meeting report for the September 21st, 2021 Regular Session of Board of Commissioners. Budget Committee of the County Legislature Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met pursuant to due notice in the library at the Lincoln Central Academy on September the 7th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Members present, Steve Graham, Ricky Bryant, Kate Ewing, Randy Bradford, Grady Revis, Doug Cunningham, Shirley Dangerfield, and Donnie Ogilvy was out. Others present were county mayor Bill Newman, finance director Vicki Trenum, county attorney Ed Sims, county trustee Mary Jane Porter, fire EMA director Doug Campbell, county extension agent Dan Owen, register of deeds Randy DeLaup, county maintenance director Ricky Pierce, commissioner Charles Hunter, commissioner Steve Sprague, commissioner David Sanders, commissioner Tori Young, commissioner Mark Mitchell, commissioner Stephanie Britt, and Dana Gentry. Item one, county mayor Newman provided the following information. For information, A, was Richardson's property contract update. Commissioner Donnie Ogilvy entered the meeting at this time. Attorney Sims is working on the option agreement, and we will need to put a $10,000 deposit down upon signing the option agreement. The planning and zoning office is working on rezoning this site to industrial. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the mayor signing the option agreement and issuance of $10,000 earnest money. Increase account number 101-51800-599 by $10,000, and the decrease account number 101-39,000 by $10,000.
Okay. An update before I call for a motion on it. I did sign the option agreement. That agreement has been signed, and we do need to vote on the payment of the $10,000 option money. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Haynes makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
B, animal control, Humane Society of Lincoln County. Animal control charges us $2,000 to $3,000 per month, and it is being paid out of the mayor's discretionary fund. Mayor Newman has requested that the Budget Committee reconsider funding the Humane Society, the additional $25,000 for animal control. This will be added to their nonprofit appropriation totaling $62,500 annual appropriation or devised. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed seven yes, one out, to recommend approval of the request funding of $25,000 for the Humane Society. An increase account number 101-55150-310 by $25,000, and decrease 101-39,000 by $25,000.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Ewing makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor seconds it. There's a copy of the guideline of what they're supposed to perform under this on the backside of the last page of the commission. I'll answer any questions if you got any of them, as far as this, as far as relating to the Humane Society performing these duties. No questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item two, Lincoln County Extension Agent Dan Owen. We've got a request attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Revis, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the county's contributing $19,133 toward hiring a TSU county agent. Increase account number 101-47100-310 by $19,133, and decrease account number 101-39,000 by $19,133.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Walker makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds it. On our extension agents, county pays, I think, is it 31%? Commissioner Ogilvy, and the state picks up the balance of that, so that's 1/3 of the benefits and the salary on that. All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item three, register of deeds Randy DeLaup, Archives Building. Randy DeLaup presented the committee with an option of a new building for the Archives at a price of $714,000, using the land behind the Archives or purchase of land and building of 5,200 square feet on Winchester Highway for $265,000. We would have to add fire suppression at a cost of $70,000. To note, after elevation study by John Phillips, the main floor of the building is not in the floodplain elevation, but that the basement is in the floodplain elevation. After much discussion, there was a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of letting the owner of the building know that we are not interested in purchase of property at 929 Winchester Highway, formerly the paint store.
I would entertain a motion confirming that this full body follows what the Budget Committee recommended, that we do not pursue in the purchase of this building. Commissioner Taylor makes a motion. Commissioner Sprague seconds. Any discussion or question? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item four, trustee Mary Jane Porter, the Lincoln Tax Collection Service, that information item.
Do you want to address the full commission? Does that take care of what's required by this body? Okay. Thank you.
Item five, finance director Trenum presented the following items. A, unclaimed property resolution. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed seven yes, one out, to recommend approval of the attached unclaimed property resolution.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham. Any questions, comments on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
B, 101 General Fund Budget Amendments. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed seven yes, one out, to recommend approval of the attached 101 General Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Revis seconds it. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
C, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Motion by Commissioner Revis, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed seven yes, one out, to recommend approval of the attached 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Britt seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
D, fire EMA surplus and scrap property. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed seven yes, one out, to recommend approval of the attached fire EMA surplus and scrap property.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Sprague makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
E, financial reports are enclosed. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed seven yes, one out, to recommend approval of the enclosed financial reports.
Would entertain a motion to follow that, that you got the financial reports and approve of those. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
F, Lincoln County Courthouse Video Arrangement System bid results. There's no action required. We had an item, an item six, there being no further business to be presented. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed to adjourn, respectfully submitted to the September 2021 Regular Session of the County Legislature Body, Steve Graham, chairman, Donnie Ogilvy, secretary, and Vicki Trenum, recording secretary. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ogilvy. Next item, our notary publics, Madam Clerk.
I've Cheyenne Klashinsky by Commissioner Holland, Carisha L. Carruth by Commissioner Cunningham, Heather Rochelle Alexander by Commissioner Holland, Cynthia Hone and Julie Schwartz by Commissioner Walker, Virginia Shockner by Commissioner Ewing, Kim Hall and Pat M. Fraley by Commissioner Cunningham, Leanna Thorpe by Commissioner Sanders, Karen Wingo Campbell by Commissioner Sanders, William G. Shelton by Commissioner Revis.
Any additions to that list? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of those read. Mr. Mitchell makes a motion. Commissioner Dangerfield seconds. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item is new business. I have one item that's already been scheduled on there, EMA. Commissioner Douglas, are you going to? They had, I recognize Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, commissioners, this won't take just a few minutes. Last month, on the 10th, we voted to send this straight to our legal counsel, Mr. Ed Sims, and we didn't get it before the August meeting to get a motion from the full body on the property lines in Molina. We're having problems with flooding, and there's a little property line dispute. We've got insurance problems there, that they fixed our fire department, and now we're kind of in limbo. Before we do it anymore, we've got to get a boundary to where we can shed the water off the building. So, I know Mr. Campbell has some pictures for us to illustrate, so we need to show y'all what we're talking about so we can move forward.
So, part of the problem we have, just a little bit of history here for some of you who may be new commissioners, and like myself, when I came into this position, this is our east side, looking at the east side of our Station 418 at Molina. The drive that you see is on the west side. Molina Road would be where you were standing, looking at this picture. So, the fire station would be to your left, and the drive would be to the right with the property owner. One of the things that I was tasked with when I was hired at 16 was try to get property lines and firm deeds for all of the county property, and this is one of them that we had started working on, and we still don't have a resolution. We hired Corory Engineering. They came in and spent $770. They surveyed or tried to find a pin anywhere from Red Hill Road, Plum Over Pass, Jimmy Jennings, all the way down to the next road over the hill, and there is no firm marker to go by. We have an OD that says property started here, and this has been a longstanding issue with water getting into this building. The original gentleman who owned this property agreed, and the county paid, I don't remember the exact year, somewhere 2010, maybe, to have this ditch cleared out and the exact year, somewhere 2010 maybe, to have this ditch cleared out and the county paid the county road superintendent to go out there and clean this ditch out. And it really helped with the water intrusion into the building. The membership at Malina had done some things trying to help that. Since that time, you can see those metal fence posts. The property owner to the west there has added in about a 10-foot tile and closed up part of the ditch and he no longer allows us to keep the ditch cleaned out. We had a letter from his parents that allowed us to clean the ditch out and keep it clean provided we didn't tear up his water line in doing so, and if we did, we would repair it. The membership had done that and it really helped. We had some minor problems with water, but for the large part, this helped it. If you'll go to picture two, Phyllis, please. This is what the ditch looks like today. We've been unable to clean it out for over three years now and so he has filled in part of the ditch, filled it in with dirt, put a tile in it. He's mowing that area and the rest of it is just growing up in weeds. So we're back to having major water problems that we have for the last two years. If you'll go to picture three, please. So this was a picture and I don't know how well you can see it, but that's not a lake. That's water in front of the Malina Fire Station, running into the building, through the building, around the building. We had an insurance claim down there because of mold. We got to noticing and the inside of the floor, the walls where it joins the concrete floor was rotting. Six times in 2019, the membership had to go down there and clean mud and water out of the fire station. So we started looking at it and once we started finding the mold and issues, we had the insurance come down. They looked at it and advised that any claim from this day forward would not be honored until we fixed the water into the building. So basically, we're paying insurance on the building right now that if it's due to water damage, we're not going to get any help from the insurance with. We've met with the property owner, if you'll go to the next picture. This is a recent picture. You can kind of see the water from the fall last year when we started having problems. The ditch hadn't grown up, but you can see how far down he's filled the ditch up there on your right. You can see the water flowing. The membership had built this wall years ago, retaining wall, to try to help turn it and you can see that the overflow is still coming that way. Next picture, please. So this is where the problem originates, is it comes down the hill here at the individual's driveway. And he's pretty adamant. We met with him in the mayor's office with Mr. Sims and he wants a ditch put in front of the Malina Fire Station, all the way down past the Malina Church there. And he wants to fill all that area in next to the Malina Fire Station so he can keep it mowed. He said that's the way the ditch should originally went. We've done some checking. Tim Gills went out there with me, Chris Mers with the Water Department went out there and we dug down. We can put a reverse terrace in front of the fire hall, 20-foot wide, six-foot deep, which we think will solve a lot of the problem, run it 150-foot. The Water Department's agreed to work with us and move the water meter because it sits right in front of the station. We've had bids anywhere from $18,000 to $35,000 to $35,000 in order to build that reverse terrace in front of the fire station, which will help with the problem, but it's not going to completely solve the problem because when you fill in that ditch, there is a natural bowl on the western property and there is a tile under the gentleman's driveway that empties in to that ditch right at the end of where our fire station is. So if you fill that in, that's going to continue to put water over onto us and into the fire station. If you'll go to the next picture, please. So this, you can't see, but that's about two inches of water deep inside the back part of the fire station. It doesn't show up real well there. Next picture. This is inside the front of the station where it's coming in under the doors, where the trucks and the equipment's parked and it just runs straight on through into the back part of the fire station. Next picture, please. This is a picture of the wall that was replaced and repaired at a cost of about $2,400 to the county. And we have a $2,500 deductible, so none of the damages met the deductible, so this was at the expense of the county that we had to pay a contractor to come in. And you can see that since that time, we're now starting to get rot on the new walls and stuff that were put in. Next picture, please. This is kind of the look of what our parcel, according to property viewer, should look like. There's some contention on that, according to the landowner. He says that his property line goes straight on the blue line, which is on your right-hand side, all the way down to the road, and it's hard to read on the deed. Croy Engineering spent a lot of time out there. Their recommendation was to have a title search and deed done by the county attorney. Mr. Sims did that and he could find nothing that was anything different than what Croy Engineering had found at that time. I met with the individual again back earlier in the year and again, he would talk of nothing except putting a ditch in front of the building. And I said, "Well, we're wanting to do a survey and establish a property line." He says, "I know where my property line is. It runs straight between the church and the building, the fire station, and it goes to the road." Basically saying, "We don't own any property there." At this point, I really don't know what to do to try to get a survey in that property and be able to establish a line so that we can protect that station. Over the 20 years that station's been in there, there's been a lot of money and if you've been to that station, you can tell it's a very well-kept station and the membership is tired of sweeping water and mud out of it and they're not doing it. Until we can fix it, they said, "There's no need in us sweeping and cleaning it out. It's just going to wash right back in there the next time we have a rain." The committee voted, and Mr. Douglas, if I'm not out of line, to proceed with legal action to try to establish a boundary based on property viewer and the deed that we have on record. And that's where Commissioner Douglas, I turn it back over to you, sir. Any questions, I'll try to answer if I can. I think in my five years, we've tried to work with this individual and there is no working with it. So nobody wants to go to this point, but I think we're at some point if we're going to protect our property and the county funding.
Thanks, Phil. This is, like he said, it's been ongoing. Goes back to 2013. It's time we move forward and protect our assets. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to turn this item over to our county attorney to move forward with trying to establish a boundary line, property line.
All righty. Do I have a second to that motion? Seconded by Commissioner Walker. Any questions?
Do you recognize me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I recognize our county attorney, Ed Sims.
It's been a long time since I've looked at this and, you know, if we bring legal action to establish a boundary line and it determines that this property owner is correct, we've done nothing. This commission may want to consider a condemnation action to get what property we need to protect our fire station. Now, we don't, I've done one condemnation action in 20 years and this county commission normally does not do that. But I don't know, you know, if he's right on the boundary line, then we've accomplished nothing. So this is something you might want to consider and maybe it's last, we've been going for four, five years, we might want to study that and before you make your decision on this, consider condemnation.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas, do you want to change your motion, proceed with it?
Oh, yes, sir. I'll change my motion to move forward.
With a condemnation of the property to make it useful for the county. Is that, okay. Who made, I forgot who made the second on that. Commissioner Walker, do you concur with that? Okay. Now, any discussion? Commissioner Britt, recognize?
Do you have just a real brief explanation of what's involved in a condemnation action just for those of us who don't know?
Usually, of course, we'll have to get surveyors out there to determine what property we need to, that we really need for our purposes. And I guess Croy would, Croy or maybe, maybe, was it John Stevens that did the work? Y'all remember?
At the time when it was done, John was still with Croy. He's no longer with Croy, but it was done when he was with Croy.
Okay. I didn't know what surveyor to do.
In 2017.
But we'd need to consult with him to see what we need. And again, this is, you know, this is an engineering problem. I don't know what exactly we'll need as far as to make it flow properly and what kind of construction we're going to do, but basically to answer Ms. Britt's question, we get it surveyed, we file a lawsuit in a Chancery Court or Circuit Court. We, basically, we put up the money as to the value of the property we're condemning and we can go ahead and take possession of that property normally with the only dispute being, how much do we owe this person for this property that we're taking? Now, I know this is, this is rare for us to do this, very rare. And we did it one other time for the Highway Department where they had to have one little spot of land for a bridge and they just had to have it. So we did that and that's the only one I've ever done. And this would be the second one if we go forward with this. But it's a remedy and again, if we get it, if we have a boundary line dispute with this owner and he's right, then again, we've accomplished nothing. We've got to have, we've got to determine what property we need for our purposes to stop the flooding. So I don't know how else to do it, Mayor. But does that answer your question? It's not a very complex lawsuit. It's just a matter of how much we owe this person. And of course, the court's got to determine whether or not we can condemn this property. I don't know, I've forgotten, it's been three or four years since I've even looked at this and I can't remember how much frontage he's got and I don't remember how that driveway lies, whether or not that's going to somehow landlock him or cause him some extra problems. We just have to study it all.
It does not. Commissioner Cunningham?
The original motion that was made to get you to go check out, couldn't we do that? And then if that didn't work and he was right, then we could do a condemnation. What have we lost though by doing that?
What we need, we need to, you know, this, I've got to get re-familiarized with it. I'm not familiar with the EMA. It's been, it's been a long time.
I've read the deed and it's, it's a general boundary description, I think. Am I correct on that? I believe it is.
I remember.
So basically, the description of it is bound by your property, bound by his property, bound by somebody else's property, but I don't think there's a meets and bounds description. Now, correct with that, Doug?
Yes, sir. There's a note in the bid form. This was a summary on August the 9th, 2018. I went back to Croy Engineering and I said, "Hey, this is still a problem." And he gave me five points. He says, "I reviewed the survey work we performed at the Malina Fire Department and the results are: The deed for the fire department is ambiguous and as such, it would be helpful only to support other evidence. The deed for the church on the east side of the subject property does not agree with evidence found in the field. The deed for the property to the west of subject property, which is the Harper property, reads that it is a straight line from Harper's southeast corner to the road, meaning in theory, it should be a projection of the fence on the east side of the Harper property to the road and as such, would put the entire fire department building on the Harper property. I realize that this makes a few assumptions on my part. I looked at the possibility of the fire department property being a part of the Harper property at one time and researched back and discovered the Harper deed reads the same as it did when it was recorded in December the 20th of 1906. I believe a good course of action at this time may be a complete title search by an attorney and hope that they find something I missed in the research. I will sit down and review with the attorney my findings after the title search is complete." So that was when Mr. Sims had did the title search and found nothing different at this and that was in 2018. So we keep getting flooded. I don't know what to do. So that's why it came before my committee.
Okay. Ed, are you comfortable if we proceed on the motion on the floor of proceeding with condemnation?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't.
Are you comfortable with us proceeding on the condemnation of the property?
You know, and just honestly, I think we need to study it before we make any motions. And I'd maybe table it for one month and I know we're kicking the can down the road one more month. But anyways, it's brought before the commission.
Okay. What about just withdrawing?
I'll withdraw.
Will you withdraw your second, Commissioner Walker? Okay. All right. Any other new business or anything else we need to address, Commissioner Douglas, on this item? Doug Campbell, do you have anything else relating to any of them? Okay. Any other new business? Okay, we got a motion to adjourn, Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed, no. We are adjourned.